Do we have a public hearing? I didn't think so. So, item number four is agenda. Hang on a minute.
Item number five.
Item number five, the Pledge of Allegiance.
What is four?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There in my packet, I had a public hearing on that, uh...
Agenda.
Bright agro tech?
No, that was last time.
That was...
That's what was in my packet.
That was last Thursday, Councilor Vitale.
Well, okay, it was in my packet.
Yes.
I believe that's the minutes from the, from the meeting, Councilor Vitale, that you're looking at with my signature on the bottom.
All right.
This public hearing was called to order. Notice of a public hearing, public hearing, public hearing. Sorry.
Okay, roll call.
Hanson.
You're here.
Henry.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
That is nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number seven, disclosures by council members. Are there any members of council that have a conflict of interest concerning the issues we'll be discussing tonight? Okay, item number eight, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Okay, we have two changes to the agenda tonight, so I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. It's on the consent agenda, it's number 10H. Item four, we are adding on April 5th, 2016, a public hearing regarding, regarding ordinance number 1941, which is amending Title 15 of the Laramie Municipal Code. And item five, again, a public hearing on April 15th, twenty, or April 5th, 2016, it's ordinance number 1942, amending Title 15 of the Laramie Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Somerville. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by Councilor Shumway. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and a second by Councilor Somerville. City Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're on to the regular agenda. Item number 12, Councilor Schuster.
Yes, I will be introducing resolution 2016 dash 25. We had a meeting on it last Thursday. I move to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 25, allocating $282,818 to 22 community partner agencies in fiscal year 2017, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Assistant City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Council, before you is resolution 2016 25. It allocates, based on the averages, $282,818 to your 22 local agencies that requested funding this year. All of the allocations meet the requirements of the parameters you set forth in your discussion as to how we would do this, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you.
Who's to approve?
It's already been, there's already a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Okay. So, discussion on the motion on the floor by council. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? City Clerk, could you do roll call?
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
No.
Weaver.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Item number 13, Councilor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the CMAR contract with the guaranteed maximum price for construction of the tungsten heavy powder and parts office and manufacturing building to Sampson Construction Company, Inc., in amount not to exceed $2,935,924, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. City staff? Mr. Farstead.
Honorable Mayor, Council, thanks for your time. As the agenda says for your consideration is the construction manager at risk contract with a guaranteed maximum price for the tungsten heavy powder and parts office and manufacturing facility in the Laramie River Business Park Two out in West Laramie. The cover sheet shows that this is following the selection committee's review deliberation and recommendation for Sampson Construction. I think it's important to note that this is 100% revenue offset, so this is fully grant-funded as it relates to the municipal expenditure, and I think it's gonna be a fantastic project. I'm excited about it. I think it aligns with our goals and the business council's goals for job creation, and it would certainly be staff's recommendation to approve it, and I would entertain any questions, please.
Questions? Councilor Hanson.
Just one question. There is, of course, this lengthy document in there, standard form of agreement between owner and contractor, but it doesn't seem like anybody from the city is signing this document. I looked at the signatures at the end, let me get to that, it says owner and then contractor.
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Hanson, fantastic question. So, what you have in front of you was the final working draft as we went back and forth through our, our legal counsel and through Sampson's legal counsel as they put this together, and we've, we've changed the signature block, it's got an attest, it's got a place for the mayor to sign, and we've got signed copies by Sampson Construction Co., Inc. So, we made a finer, final, there is, the working draft was final in the sense that there was no structural changes made to anything on there. The edits were removed and the signature block was changed, so...
So, the mayor will sign it?
Correct.
That answers my question. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Other, Councilor Schuster?
Did they make the, the concept drawing available so that they could put it on the screen or anything, or is that possible, or probably not?
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Schuster, there, there's, they have about an 80% construction drawing set of plans done right now, but I didn't, this, this was put together as the construction site, so that you'll, what you, what I handed out will be on a four by eight sheet of plywood, put out on the, at the construction site itself, but I can, I would be happy to forward you. There's, there's, there's no perspective drawings, the fun, interesting stuff, there's a site plan that's been submitted, which is just a footprint, and in terms of elevations, they're working on a few final details. What you see in the front, the, that architectural with the precast columns, et cetera, that's not going to change, but there's not, I really was a little hesitant knowing that we don't have 100% construction documents yet, we will in about a week and a half, before I get anybody too excited about posting what, what the finished product may look like.
Elevations are not gonna be much, that property is extremely flat.
That's not what he means by elevations.
I know, I know. Well, they took the, um, the high biz, and they did bring in a tremendous amount of dirt and did do an elevation with it, so, I know they have to have it at a certain height because of the water table out there is terrible.
Sure.
Anything else? Okay, other questions? Do we have any, do we have any comments from council? And then I'll, yes, Councilor Henry.
I'm gonna say my mantra. I hope we have enough parking spaces for the growing number of employees that are expected to be working at this place.
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Henry, I appreciate that very much. So, based on the building square footage and its use, as it, its current size, based on square footage, 41 are required and 41 are there, and I think that's gonna be, it'll be very adequate, code compliant, everything's good on that for sure, and I appreciate your comment.
Would anyone from the public wish to comment? City Clerk, could you do roll call?
Somerville.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
That motion carries. Item, let's see, item number 14, Councilor Henry.
Item number 14, Councilor Henry. I move to approve a professional services agreement with Tri-Hydro Corporation to complete an engineering design manual in the total amount not to exceed $122,277, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. City Clerk.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Cap, City Engineer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of council, I'd like to apologize for not giving you the scope until today, but, I mean, can I answer any questions that you do have on that? As the cover sheet noted, the city's unified development code was adopted in July of 2010. An engineering design manual is identified as a critical component to be used in conjunction with the UDC. The engineering design manual will create criteria for engineering, design, and development in the construction process. The manual shall encompass all engineering, design criteria that are encountered within a project for the city of Laramie. This manual shall inform engineers of what is expected to complete a design while giving the city a standard to perform reviews. In January of 16, staff solidified an RFQ for the engineering design manual. On February 5th of 16, proposals were received from six consultants in accordance with the RFQ that was advertised. A committee of five staff members from community development evaluated the proposals based on the criteria outlined in RFQ, and the cost for each proposal was submitted in a separate sealed envelope and opened after staff evaluated all the outlined criteria and selected the most qualified consultant. Based on the evaluation, Tri-Hydro scored the highest overall by staff, and staff therefore recommends approval of the professional service contract with Tri-Hydro. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Yes, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question. I know we have all kinds of codes, you know, electrical code, building code, et cetera. What does this document do? This is a little unclear to me, because wouldn't you read those documents if you are going to design something, and don't you have to stick to those, because these are usually international codes, or at least codes that apply to more than one state, et cetera? So, I'm, I'm a little confused as to the need for this particular document.
Your Honor, Mayor, Councilor Hanson, if you go to page three in your scope of services, you will see all the items that they will be reviewing. Those are some items that we do have, however, in the engine, in engineering for the city, we don't have exactly written down how consultants should design city projects, either for development or for our own projects that we do, in-house capital projects. So, we do have some criteria in, that is based off of the municipal code, Wyoming Public Works, our city standard details, but as far as some design criteria, we don't have it all written down in one place, and it is lacking in quite a few places, which makes it very difficult for the consultant. It kind of, we try to avoid it as much as possible, but it can become staff's professional opinion versus another professional opinion that can cause into lots of conflicts with that. This is something that has been requested quite a bit from our consultants, developers, engineers in town. They, this is something that they want to see, this is gonna be a document that engineering, community development staff can handle, our consultants, this will outline pretty much everything that needs to be done for engineering within the city of Laramie. Does that answer your question a little bit more?
Partially. You referred to page three of the 14 pages, right? What paragraph particularly are you referring to?
Wait. Councilor Hanson, this is in the scope of services, it's under task one, two, one.
Wait a minute. I'm in the wrong, wrong document, right?
Yeah, you wanted the attachment that came through later, Councilor.
Okay. The later attachment?
So, it's not in the agenda, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is.
It's not here?
It's not online here.
I don't think it is. 14...
Would it be added to the entire PDF, or would it just be the link on the...
Oh. Page three of that, page three of that. Okay. Detailed assumptions approach, right?
Okay, I think City Clerk has something to add to this.
You have three attachments to that item on your electronic agenda, it is the last attachment.
Okay.
It says agreement for the engineering design manual attachment. Actually, it's the second to the last one on my agenda, but it's the one that says agreement for the engineering design manual slash, 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 attachment A is the attachment it was loaded today.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was the document that you just had open, Councilor.
It was the one I just had open, I guess, yeah. All right, it was.
Why don't I go to Councilor Shumway, and if you have another question?
No, no, that's, that's it.
Councilor Shumway.
I wonder what we did before this week? Because that's a lot of money to spend, and you know, here's, the engineering department is very technical and very, you know, you have to be up on all the codes and all the things that are going on, and we're making something that is unique and specific for Laramie, for, you know, the people that are coming here. How quickly will that be outdated, we have to, I mean, how easy, we're spending 100 and...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand dollars? How long is that gonna be relevant before we have to go back in and redo this?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Shumway, it should last, it's gonna be a, a working document that staff will be continually updating, it's very similar to the UDC. However, many of the standards that will be incorporated into this are standards that have been around for quite a while. It's, is taking some stuff from Wyoming DQ, it's taking some stuff from, uh, traffic, traffic, things like that. That will, that will stay current for quite a while. If, if things change, staff will be, staff will perform the updates for that and make sure that we do stay current with that.
Okay. What, just so, I mean, how critical is this? I mean, we have been for decades going along without having to have this document. How critical is it for us to have, to spend 122,000 dollars to have this?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Shumway, as I had noted in the cover sheet, this is a document that is outlined in UDC. As of right now, that document does not exist. In the past, you've asked that, a lot of times it was whatever the city engineer says, and that no longer works very well in Laramie. We, we can't say that comment anymore. This really will, in my opinion, it is a very critical document. As I had noted, several of our engineers, our developers, this is a document that they have requested from the city. It is very difficult for them to design items in Laramie. They're currently, we're lacking on several guidelines regarding engineering here at the city. It makes staff's job very difficult, even to review items. This will, this document will speed up review process considerably. It will give us a very solid checklist, it will give us a very solid standing when we have to make comments when it comes to developers, to consultants, to meet that criteria. This will go through, define the plat process, what needs to be shown on plats. We function right now, but it is challenging, especially when difficult situations arise when there's conflicts. This will outline specifically what developers, consultants need to complete to have a thorough and complete design here at the city of Laramie.
I guess I have another question along the same line, and I, I do understand the reason for this, and I also, I'll make a comment later as far as the challenges we've had in the past by not having a written document, but the question I had is, I know that there's a lot of confusion sometimes as to testing standards, when the testings need to be done on concrete, on, on roadway surfaces, on underlayment before we pave, and so forth and so on. There's also inspection standards of when, when, I know there's been disagreements in the past as to when an inspection is appropriate and at what, at what time. Will this document also address all of that type of thing?
Your Honorable Mayor, as far as the, the testing procedure, that is actually being covered right now in our pavement addendum that council approved here a few weeks ago. I can't remember the exact date that that had appeared. One of the criteria that was part of that was to outline the testing procedure for pavement, base course, and along those guidelines. That is more, a lot of these documents are all intertwined to a degree, but also separate documents. That is more handled in the city's supplementary specifications, which is part of the city's project manual, without getting too technical, but that's kind, that goes out with projects, and those details are outlined by the design engineer. We are going through all of that right now, and developing guidelines. We actually just had a public meeting today with several of our asphalt suppliers and some contractors within here at the city, and gathered input from them on what their feelings and how we should move forward with that. So, that is being, that's not gonna necessarily be part of that, they will, the testing procedures will not be part of this. This is more for going into the design criteria, not the actual construction and how that operates.
I'm just wondering, it just doesn't get rolled into that document, I guess.
Your Honorable Mayor, it will not get rolled into the engineering design document, they will take a look at it, but it will be part of, it will be updated with the pavement manual. The pavement manual will, will basically incorporate the pavement manual into this engineering design manual, it's another component.
Thank you. Councilor Hanson?
Let me ask another question, thank you, Your Honor. Does it have any legal standing? Because, I mean, we have all these design codes that we have to follow. If this does anything, suggests anything different from the officially, the electrical code, the whatever code, that wouldn't have any legal standing anyway, would it?
Your Honorable Mayor, Councilor Hanson, this would basically almost be code as far as the review process, and with that, there's areas, we would follow those, those, the green book, as we've talked about, or things like that, the codes, as have already been discussed. This would expand on that. There's general areas where those are lacking, and we don't have enough information. This would compile all those into one location to be very easy for design engineers and city staff, and then it would also expand on the areas where that is lacking, that we don't have current codes to cover design. One example that we run into a lot is street grading. So, there's some general grading criteria, but as far as a percentage to allow water to drain down a street, we don't have that written out anywhere. There's a general policy that we have here at the city that most of our developers and engineers comply with and do so willingly, however, that is not flat out written down, you must have a .5% in the street. That, that is what this document, just one example of where this document will fill in where we're lacking.
Sort of, I guess, in biblical terms, it's sort of an exegetic document to the codes. Okay, well, thank you, that satisfies me.
Councilor Hanson, I, I think where you're getting confused is, your international building code has to do with buildings, if you will.
Yeah.
Okay, this code, correct me if I'm wrong, has to do with right of ways, streets, sidewalks, it has, and the international building code addresses none of that, it only addresses the buildings you're putting up on...
No, but they have a book on, on street design, on, they're a big book, because I'm on the traffic commission, it's always referred to, so, that's the one that would regulate those things.
So, if I may, if no, does anyone else have a question? Councilor Vitale.
Just, I guess, the way I see this, it's gonna be accumulation of a lot of existing engineering things that are in a number of different documents that they want to bring together into one document, and add any deficiencies. I, I find it a little disheartening that the, the grade for runoff in a street is not in writing. That might lead to some confusion when contractors get approved to do something, they get started, then somebody comes out and tell them, "You're not doing it right," okay, and they have to redo it, but I look at 122,000 dollars, if you had an employee making 40,000 dollars with benefits, you're looking at possibly, what, three employees or more. I'm a little slow on my math tonight, but, but that would represent a number of employees, and when we get the potential that we may have to lay off 15 to 20 employees, depending on how the budget's gonna fall and what the revenue looks like, and a whole lot of things that we haven't had a chance to see yet, what the bottom line is, if I had to make a choice between the manual and saving the jobs of a number of employees, I think I would vote to save the jobs of the employees. And, and so, I, I find it difficult at this time that we're going to be spending money here at this point in time that I don't think is critical to our operation. And, yeah, it may be an inconvenience if somebody has to look at one manual and another manual, but over the years with the computers and everything, somebody should have been putting this together, or hired a, an intern to come in and put some of this stuff together and catalog it, but, uh, I have a concern, even though they say it's in the budget, I, that would, that would bother me, that I would okay spending money for a manual when you're gonna lay off a number of employees that you could maintain, so, probably not important.
Thank you. Other, other questions for our city engineer? I have a question for either the city engineer or the city manager, and that is, is it feasible to put something together, given our, our internal knowledge, if you will? Is there another alternative as doing in-house or in-house with perhaps hiring someone to help put this together on a temporary basis versus using a consultant? And I'm not sure whether the city engineer or the city manager should answer that.
Your Honorable Mayor, this is something staff has honestly tried to complete since 2010, and we just haven't had the time to complete it. There, there is the expertise in-house, it's just, it's a very time-consuming document, and with running projects, assisting, reviewing development, this is something that we just haven't had the time to complete. Tri-Hydro is throwing 30 professionals at this to complete this next, by next fall. That, that gives you just a general guideline, they're gonna throw 30 staff at it from several, several different firms. This isn't just Tri-Hydro, they do have subs, it's gonna have other reviewing firms here within the Laramie, the city of Laramie, and they're gonna be working together, and even with that, they're saying that September timeline is pretty short. So, not saying that we could not do this in-house, if that is the direction the council gives, but we're, it's gonna be extended out for several more years before we have the time to fully complete it in-house. It's just, it's a very large document and takes quite a bit of time to complete.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor and council, I'd remind you, this project is budgeted, was approved by you in this year's budget. It was also recommended to you by me last year about this time to be adopted, and the reason is precisely what Eric has said. The UDC references and calls out the need for this document, I believe the comprehensive plan did as well, and if you had the professionals in your community that work in design, they would be here telling you that it is in many ways a customer service... be here telling you that it is, in many ways, a customer service document that's going to allow them to do better work for their clients, and hopefully streamline some of the time that our staff invest right now. As Eric said, I mean, you really only have three engineers on staff in a city of this size, that is quite thin. They just don't have the time to get to it and still keep up with the day-to-day reviews that come into this organization. So I hope that you'll think of it a little bit as a customer service tool for the professionals in our community who work in development and building, and certainly something that would allow for a lot less debate back and forth, a tet, if you will, where, you know, maybe the engineers are saying, "We need four-inch thickness in concrete paths," and then there's discussion about, "Well, no, we think six is appropriate," or, "No, we think four inches of concrete is appropriate." There's a lot of back and forth now. If our development community has this set out to begin with, they can just comply with those standards, cuts down on their time, and also cuts down on our staff's time in reviewing that, sending it back through multiple iterations to those professionals, and then the dialogue and whatnot that occurs between us and them. It's just there, everybody knows the rules, we move forward. So, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sorry, and that was pretty similar to what I was going to say regarding customer, customer service. I would imagine the folks that we work with on a, on a daily basis are really asking for this, so I will support it.
Thank you. Counsel Schuster?
I'm so torn on this one, it isn't even funny, but there's things going both directions. If it's going to improve customer service and get things through in a more timely manner, then it probably is a very good deal. One of the other things is, is it's being kept local. We've had some discussions lately on what's being kept local, what's been getting sent out of town, out of state, that I am going to support this because I'm hoping that all the facts are true and that it will help customer service. It will speed things up timely going through the different offices to build a project, and it is helping a local firm, so I will support it.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. Just one question, has it been decided, will this be in a hard copy book form, or will it be available online? It seems to me, because things change all the time, it should probably be online and be available online so that people can see it, and then make a document that is in several packets, because otherwise you can't open it. Is that the idea?
Your Honorable Mayor, Counsel Hanson, that is the intent of this. It will be posted on the City of Laramie Engineering's website. We'll keep it updated, they'll be able to get in there and download it accordingly.
All right, just stay away from a hard copy here, it's not worth it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I don't know.
Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
No.
Weaver?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
That's eight yeses and one no, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 15, Counselor Schuster.
Can I ask a quick question first?
Sure.
We just had on the pre-agenda that we were moving the meeting, or the, one of the public hearings to April 5th, and on here on the motion that shows for a public hearing on April 12th, which would you like?
That's a great question.
I don't mean to put anybody on the spot, but I see two dates, Randy.
That's a fair question, Counselor Schuster, it should be April 5th, on your motion, I apologize.
On my motion, okay, then I will move for the motion now. I move to approve original ordinance number 1941 on first reading, in accordance with the findings, facts, conclusions of law, to set a public hearing for April 5th, 2016, and delay second reading, do you still want on the 19th?
No, sir, that should end at a period after setting public hearing on April 5th.
So it will be on April 5th also?
That's correct.
Okay, so delay second reading and now?
No, just stop.
Just stop right there, and the next reading will be on April 5th, 2016.
That'll work.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, motion is second.
And I will do it on the next one, too.
That's also correct, thank you.
Second by the vice mayor, city clerk, you're clear?
I am clear, thank you.
Thank you. City staff?
Changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is one of two UDC amendments you have before you tonight. This one will clear up an issue that we've had for, I think, quite a few years, although it's been more noticeable or more prevalent in recent years. It also follows up on a work session you had, I think about a year and a half ago, a good measure of, council mayor, remember. This ordinance will allow for vacation of what we usually call paper streets or paper alleys in a fashion that does not require an appraisal and does not require compensation to be provided for the city. I believe that follows the direction that you gave us when you had that work session. If we think of the original town of Laramie, that's a good example, original town of West Laramie, another good example, those two, which are taken together, a pretty big geographical piece of town, and also platted many decades ago, have quite a few streets, mostly alleyways, but a few are full-fledged, you know, local with streets, that were never built and exist literally only on a plat that's recorded in the courthouse, never been built, never been identified as a need, and also as a future matter, never identified as something that we will need on major street plan. Now, that's a narrow set of tests, but it does cover quite a few of these. So again, those of you who were at the work session, we posited the idea of a test that if, I think of it myself as past, present, future, that's kind of a good memory device. So in the past, if these streets have never been built, never existed except on the paper in the courthouse, present, not needed now, no one's actually building or using them, and in the future, not identified on any of our adopted documents, major street plan, for example, an approved and still active preliminary plat, comprehensive plan, things of that nature, then it's hard to make the case that those items are a past, present, or future need for the city. So the fulfillment of that is this UDC amendment, which would allow for removal of those from the public record, so to speak, disposal in a way that benefits the city by removing what really is an encumbrance on our books, and at the same time providing, in the way it can, an economic development incentive to the community and specifically to the adjoining property owners. Good concrete example, I know many of you remember, is the Iverson Hospital, the former hospital alleyway between-
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle of the old hospital. And the other Iverson Alley situation, we had more recently at the current hospital parking lot up the hill from the back entrance to the hospital there. Those are items that, if you think of the value to the community, with one exception that I want to mention, they provide a little return and possibly some, at the very least, complication and confusion to the community by keeping them on the books. So this would allow their effective disposal, still would require ordinance, still would come before council, would be your decision, you could choose if you wish not to vacate some of these, but it will remove some of the encumbrance aspect. The one exception I wanted to mention, and it's provided for in your ordinance amendment, is that an easement would, for utilities specifically, would and could be retained in cases where either there were existing utility lines or an identified need for those lines. And again, our utility documents and adopted plans would give us guidance in those. All that, as you've seen in the past, would go into your staff report on each individual item, so you'd have that full information. Planning Commission reviewed this three weeks ago, recommended approval, comes before you tonight for first reading, be glad to answer any questions.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. Just one question. In case of an easement, there's a whatever line underneath, a water line, whatever, does that make it a value greater than zero? Or is it the value still zero?
The value would still be zero, but with the stipulation that in your ordinance to vacate the travelway, the right-ofway part of it, we would retain the value, the city would, of the easement around the line in question. So, you know, typical, say, 16-foot paper alley, we would retain, in that case, a 16-foot wide easement, probably in our cases, a little more than we would need, but again, we simplify things like our survey costs and provide for the value of that line and the ability to work on it as we go forward.
So you couldn't necessarily build a structure on top of it if there were such a line in there, because then you couldn't get to the line anymore?
That's correct, but what it would allow for is the ability to do things like a parking lot over it, and more flexibility.
That you could, yeah, because you still could get to the line.
And again, our parking lot at Iverson, and, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Honored.
You're welcome. Counsel Schuster?
So that, excuse me, will be my question. We'll take the parking lot that the university owns that was formerly the hospital back in the 1950s, and if there is a water line or something under that parking lot, if we need to go in and repair it, will we then repair their asphalt, or will they be responsible for that?
Eric, I believe the owner of the real estate is responsible for that.
Okay, so I'm just curious if, you know, if, and I don't believe there's probably any water lines going across there, but, but just in case, just to check.
In that particular case, interestingly, there, I think, is a stub sewer line for a sewer main for the old hospital, that may or may not ever be needed, but those oddities would be careful.
We would be responsible for, if it was a crossing, we'd be responsible for it if we needed to use it, but they, if we had to replace it, they would have to redo their asphalt or landscape or whatever it crosses.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Any comments from council? Would anyone in the audience, from the public, wish to comment? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
There's nine yeses and zero no's, your honor.
That motion carries. Item number 16, Counselor Schuster.
Okay, I move to approve original ordinance number 1942 on first reading, according to findings, facts, and conclusions of law, set the public hearing for April 15th, 2016, have the second reading later, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by?
The 15th or 5th?
5th. Did I say 15?
You said 15.
I'm sorry, I apologize, it was the 5th.
I thought you said later.
You said a second hearing later.
Well, the second reading.
Later.
Okay, they're both on the same night, the public hearing.
Why don't we, just to be clear, go ahead, if you would, just repeat the-
I move to approve original ordinance number 1942 on first reading, according to findings, facts, conclusion of law, set a public hearing for April 5th, 2016, and then have the second reading on the same night, April 5th, 2016, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Is that what we're going to, is that what we agreed to?
Thank you. Let me get a second, then I'll go to your question. You had a question, Council Henry?
Yes, I didn't know that we talked about having a second reading on, on the night of the public hearing.
We did it in just the previous ordinance.
We did. Okay, all right. I wasn't listening very closely. Thank you.
Okay. City staff?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, just wanted to let you guys know, with some of our more recent ordinances, the ones that are relatively simple, we've scheduled that second reading to occur at the same time as a public hearing. Typically, the public hearing would be on an off-meeting date, but to, you know, save with costs associated with doing extra copies of papers, preparing agendas, we just consolidate those onto the same night. So that's the reason why they are scheduled on the same day. And as a result, for applicants and other affected people, it actually pushes these projects forward by about two to three weeks. So again, improved customer service on that level. This is a very simple text amendment to our Laramie municipal code, Title 15, the Unified Development Code. Specifically, it's correcting a couple of typographical errors that were kind of oversights from the last major change that you saw. That last Unified Development Code amendment package was looking at the site plan review process, also when are development standards applicable to different developments. Well, there were some cross-references that had a couple of incorrect numbers, they did actually reference you to the correct table, it was referencing a table like 15.14-1, that was actually found in 15-10, so it was harder to find. So what one part of this is doing is correcting those cross-references so they're all in the same place. The reason that error was made was because the use levels, if you recall the use level matrix that was within that amendment, that actually shifted locations during the review process when we were working with other community partners and agencies. The other element of this amendment package is amending the use table to correct an oversight that was actually found by Commissioner Henry during the use table amendments, or actually during the C2 zoning request up on McHugh Street. Specifically, hotels and motels were not allowed uses in the C2 district, that was an oversight through our committee, so we're moving forward with that amendment. In addition to allowing that as a permitted use in the C2 district, staff took a look at the rest of the use table and found another item that made no sense was the light industrial use. Specifically, it was allowed in the less intense I-1 district, but not allowed in the I-2 district. For fear of this becoming a burden on future development, we have added that as a permitted use in the I-2 district. I am open for any questions you may have regarding this specific ordinance. So far, we have not received any comments in opposition of this. We have received comments accepting these changes from our Laramie Economic Development Unified Development Code Advisory Committee, our subcommittee, and also from several area realtors who have indicated they support the changes.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
I guess I just have a question about our main, our motion that's on the floor, and so why didn't we just set the second, the second reading for April 5th?
We did, we did.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, it was just a weird way to word it. Okay, all right, that's all.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Honored. I remember the use tables, you know, where you could skip one step, but not two steps, et cetera, whatever. You've checked all this, so this doesn't come back to haunt us again that we're skipping the right steps and not any further, or something like that.
Honorable Mayor and Counselor Hanson, yes, all those steps and the processes and how you go up and down the steps, it all remains the same, just clarifying that cross-reference.
I guess my kids played games and ladders or something like that, and this always reminds me of it. Thank you. Just wanted to be sure it didn't come back. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Any comments from council? Would anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? City clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Weaver?
Yes.
Vitale?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Polikus?
Yes.
There's nine yeses and zero no's, your honor.
That motion carries. Item number 17, Counselor Schuster.
Okay, there we go again. I move to approve on third and final reading, original ordinance number 1930, approving the non-exclusive franchise agreement for the cable TV services between the City of Laramie, Alphie County, Wyoming, and Bresner Communications LLC, locally known as Charter Communications, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Assistant City Manager?
Honorable Mayor and Council, welcome to the second consideration of the third reading of the cable TV franchise ordinance. Today, I learned that the language that I've proposed in Section 3.2, which is not approved- is not approved by you yet, it's not acceptable to Charter either. So we won't be including that at this moment. We, we continue to field calls for people dissatisfied with the service, and would like to see improvements. I would like to note that Eric Rasmussen with Charter has been very responsive when I forward calls to him or when we talk about the situations, and I believe he's been responsive back to the customers as well. As a matter of fact, I have had calls from customers indicating that Mr. Rasmussen has called them back and has tried to remedy their problems and been successful at times. At this moment, I don't know, I, I'll have a recommendation for you as far as where I think we should go, but I think it would be best if we hear the comments, the questions you have, and pose them to the folks from Charter that are here, and, and let's go through that process, and if there's public comments, I think we should take those. And subsequent to all of that, certainly the council concerns and comments, and then, if we're at that point, I'll suggest what I think we could do to remedy this.
Okay. Thank you. So, having said that, questions from counsel? And I believe these questions would be directed toward.
I think for the Charter representatives that are here would be the best place to start.
Then why don't we ask the representative from Charter, Mr. Rasmussen, to come forward? Before we take any questions, if there's anything you'd like to say, that would be wonderful. If not, that's fine, too. Just give you the opportunity.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eric Rasmussen, with government relations with Charter Communications. And with me I have Chris Fulton, he's the Vice President of what we call RKMA, the Mountain States. And also next to Chris is Clint Rodeman, and he's the Director of Field Operations for the state of Wyoming. If there are questions, some questions I can answer and some we may have to direct to these gentlemen as well.
Yeah. The only thing I'd ask them to do is to come up and use the microphone if they answer any questions, so that it's, the recording works better.
Identify themselves.
And, and do identify yourself for the record. So, having said that, why don't we have you identify yourself for the record?
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, I'm Clint Rodeman. I'm the Director of Field Operations for the state of Wyoming.
Thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, my name's Chris Fulton. I'm the Area Vice President for the Mountain States Management Area, which includes Colorado, Wyoming, and Montana.
Great. So why don't we get into questions from counsel, to any of these gentlemen. Counselor Shumway, then Counselor Hanson, and then Counselor Vitale.
Our Assistant City Manager indicated that there may be a concern that you have about three point two in section three, and this says that we may request an annual review, but we may not. And I, I was wondering why you would not want to sit down with us and just kind of go over the concerns that the city may have, you know, for future opportunities for you to extend, you know, whatever we grant you, the franchise agreement.
Right. Mr. Mayor, through you, Counselor Shumway, I believe at the last meeting, I, I believe you were not in attendance at that meeting. Is that correct? And what was presented by Charter at that time is, we're, we're happy to come in and meet with the, the city officials at any time, and we had offered up a, a side letter which stated that. And I don't know that, it hadn't been rejected, but I think the opinion of the council was to insert the annual language requirement, and, and we would offer up again a side letter that said we would come in and meet with the council upon request.
So you, then you are in favor of having, if we request, to have an annual review?
Well, not, not inside the franchise agreement.
Just as a gentleman's agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and sir, I, I, again, I've said this before, I think in section fourteen, you guys have the ability, if there's issues, you can give us notice, point out the, what's wrong, ask us to fix it, and you, you can bring us in to have discussions with, with the council.
Okay.
Counselor Hanson.
My question is very similar, because I thought, you know, the beginning of section three point two is sort of a, a peace offering on both sides. It is the intent of the grantor to have a successful relationship with the grantee, and, and I think that's we all always want, and we want a, or maybe it could be reworded to say a mutually successful relationship, you know, in both directions. But the idea is still, I think, under the circumstances, not a bad one, that we can call on you if there are problems, because we've been bombarded with a lot of letters indicating problems, and we're sort of in a, in a real.
Pickle.
Loss, pickle, because you want it, you ought to have it, because we have no other infrastructure to have a, a, a cable service. So I find this kind of a, a, a nice way of, of making it, making a formal statement about the, a, an annual review process in case there are problems. Would you have any suggestion how to change the wording, to make it more to your liking, but keep the intent of it?
Counselor Hanson, Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Hanson. Again, I think, I, I think earlier Assistant City Manager Daragon did point out, when calls come to him, he's forwarded them to me, and I'll, if not immediately, pretty close to immediately, call the folks back, see what the issues are, if we can fix those. If those rise to different levels, we put them in the right channels to have the problems fixed. I, I think, again, anything inside the franchise agreement itself, requesting annual meetings at this point in time, wouldn't be acceptable. And again, I'd offer up, you know, a side letter that would say we would come in and meet with the city upon request.
Would that be binding? Such a side letter?
Well, I will come in and meet with you.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Counselor Vitale.
Yeah, I, I think this is probably one of the more perplexed situations that's been brought before this council and that I can remember, especially in terms of the number of residential people, as well as business owners, you know, having so many difficulties. And I guess as personally experiencing these, I, I can relate to what they're going through. I, I know walking into one of the businesses downtown, one of the restaurants, they were apologizing about how slow the service was going to be that evening because their telephones isn't working, so they couldn't get takeout orders and stuff, their computers weren't working, and I said, you know, have a storm? And they said, no, this is from our cable, the televisions weren't working, and I said, well, don't worry about us, we, we know what we want. But anyway, a number of people at that time were, were down, and that was very significant for the businesses. I know on one given day, our telephone was totally disrupted, and our telephone is the only thing we don't have on the cable service. We have the cable for televisions and computer and Wi-Fi and internet and all that other stuff, and called the telephone company. They tried to fix it over the phone, they couldn't, but within fifteen minutes, they had a service truck in the alley. They went through, and it was a connection, a bad connection. They fixed a bad connection, and we've had, you know, responsible telephone service. Our television, you know, sometimes morning, noon, and night, there's different types of interruptions, and, and which is characteristic of many people. I, I guess my, my question is, and I guess it doesn't make any difference how long this franchise agreement is, it's, it's, we could go month to month, year to year, five years, ten years, twenty years. I mean, in essence, what, what this agreement is, giving you permission to use city property for your easements, to run your infrastructure, your cables and so forth. My question, after all that superfluous information, which you've already heard, but my question is, what have you folks initiated to try and correct some of these connection problems and infrastructure problems? I know, well, I, I've been back in Laramie now for almost thirty years. We've been on cable since first day, and, and I think it was around nine ninety-five when we started then, and a buck for each other television. But anyway, what, what are you folks doing, or have you discussed anything about replacement of, of your lines, or going to, I don't know, fiber optic or, or whatever, to try and increase the level of service and reduce the amount of interruption? Now, I, I understand there's going to be some interruptions. That's in Laramie, when, when you have some of the storms or winds and things of that, we have some of these interruptions, and you kind of learn to live with it. But when it's an everyday thing, and so many people are experiencing it, there's, there has to be a common denominator, because all of us can't have bad equipment, you know? And so the question is, what are you folks doing to improve the infrastructure that will improve the quality of service and help reduce to the best, you know, of your ability, the situations, what you've been hearing about?
Mayor, Counselor Vitale, the service that many residents in Laramie have been having over the last few months has, there's definitely been lots of issues, going back to November and December, and since that time, we've actually already taken action to correct these issues. I'll try to make this as simple as I can. There, there was some legacy equipment in our network, and basically, it consisted of twenty-seven pieces of equipment that provided video switching. And they were located throughout the entire enterprise from Montana to Colorado, and one of these units was located here in Laramie. We are replacing all of those units. And as of Sunday night, the unit in Laramie is still here, but it's no longer active, and we've put in the new pieces of equipment, and that is what was really the root cause of the issues that we had last month, the month before, the prolonged outages. I think the outages we experienced in February were also compounded with what we call solar outages, or sun outages. Twice a year, at the same time of year, every single channel's impacted when the earth station that provides the signal to the satellite is in the direct line of sight of the sun, and every single channel's out anywhere from ten minutes to thirty minutes, and every cable operator and satellite TV provider goes through the same thing. So at the same week we were having those outages, I know customers were experiencing those sun outages and associated with the issues that we'd been experiencing. To put things in perspective, we had trouble calls in the, in the eighties and nineties pending, in, in what we call our pending load, when we're having these issues. Today, only two people in Laramie called in for a trouble call. So it puts things in perspective that I believe this issue is behind us. The last work we did was on Sunday. I believe the network reliability we're going to have here going forward will be significantly better than what we've had in the last three months. And this isn't a small project by any means, and when I talk about those twenty-seven pieces of equipment, they all talk to each other simultaneously, any which way, direction that they want to, and when it comes to an issue or problem, it's very hard to diagnose and to, to resolve. This new equipment that we have is state-of-the-art, it's not, it's not cheap by any means, and I'm very confident that the network reliability in Laramie will be significantly better here on out.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
My questions have been answered, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Somerville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in regards to where we're trying to get to with an agreement with you guys, you've heard about all the issues we've had over the last year, whether it's the EAS messaging not working, the significant service interruptions that we've had. We've had a lot of explanations, some of that was, well, it was regional, and we were having problems, and a couple of days after that, we had more problems. It just seems to be this culminating kind of disaster. And I think from my point of view, what the people in Laramie that are saying that they don't, that they're having so many problems, and that they're opposed to this franchise agreement, I think they're frustrated, because there's no, especially in our franchise agreement, there's no customer service benchmarks. You know, we, we keep talking about section fourteen here, section fourteen is all well and fine, although I'm not a big fan of the nuclear option, you know, trying to revoke a contract instead of sitting down at the table and talking, but there's nothing in this franchise agreement that says, you know, if five hundred people in Laramie call, that we can call Charter and say, come here and figure out what's going on. There's nothing in that agreement that says that. I mean, this agreement deals with right-of-ways, it deals with obstruction, it deals with extended service for annexations and things along those lines, but it doesn't really deal with anything customer service standard related. Now, I understand that you guys are subject to some FCC rules and regulations on, on your service, and I understand that, but I think the language that we put forward to you guys was, was exactly what we're trying to get at, is that we have recognized that over at least the last year, if not the last two, we've had significant, significant service interruptions in Laramie, and we're just looking for a way to open that door and bridge that, that gap. And with all due respect to the letter being offered, although I appreciate that, unfortunately, if the people that write that letter aren't here in a year or six months, it, it becomes absolutely worthless. So having something in the franchise agreement, that's not worthless. That's, that's an agreement that's been signed between both parties. Now, I also know that you guys are trying to get back to a ten-year franchise agreement for your infrastructure investment and everything along those lines. I'm in favor of that. I, I want to get back to that point, because I want you guys to be here and be able to provide your service to all the customers here, but it's really hard to get back to that ten-year number when you guys are unwilling to put anything in the franchise agreement to really address the customer service issues. So my question to you guys is, what, what other options, I think it's been posed a couple of times, but I'll pose it again, what other options can we put in the franchise agreement to meet some of these concerns, to address the constant concerns that we've had from the people here in Laramie?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Somerville. Excuse me. Again, it's, we, we've offered up a letter, granted, if it's written by me, you know, I could definitely ask if somebody else inside the company could write that. The question was asked, is it binding? It, it's, it's a letter. Section fourteen allows you to request us to come in and talk informally. It's right inside of section fourteen point one. If you have five hundred calls, if your city's notified, if you get ten, if you get one, and you need to talk to me, call me, I will talk to you. I, again, at this point, my, my higher-ups have told me that they wouldn't agree to the language for annual review inside the franchise agreement.
Thank you. Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. It's basically the same statement that, and Counselor Somerville said, I had fifteen calls in two days, and every single one of them says, don't approve it, and I have to call them back, because a lot of them left messages, or text me, or email me, that it really isn't about service, this is about the franchise agreement for easements, and they said still, don't approve it until service gets better. I personally made a call over the last year, a person came in, because we had several channels that just weren't there anymore. They were so much line and fuzzy. He said that basically, I probably needed to replace the cable in my house, but most of those lines went away when he improved a couple of connections. But I've noticed, when I got here and had the same cable, it was buried in the ground. Now the cable is stapled on my fence, and then dangles over to the house, and then comes into the garage and hooks up where the splices were before. So it's a little different. I'm in an industry that believes in extremely good communication between modules, and so I, I don't think much of the dangling cable, but it has improved, the service has improved, but anytime I have tiling, I've now called somebody in a brand-new subdivision with a brand-new house and said, are these channels on yours affected? They go, yes. So they have brand-new cable in their house and still have the exact problems in where I was told that my house wiring was the issue. So I've never had more people call me over something since some of our really, really, really country. really controversial ordinances over something like this, and that's, "I know that they need to call you and talk to you, but they think what we are passing tonight is for their service and not for easements." So, I'm just saying that this is a big issue out there. People are upset, and a lot of them aren't calling anymore, because they have just basically given up. And half of them are going, "Can we get anybody else in this town?" I said, "No. This town's not big enough." They said, "Well, what they can do," and it's, "Well, you either have to decide if you want cable or you want satellite. That are your two choices in LaRime, and that's it." But I've never received this many calls over something I consider this simple. That's the frustrating thing on it, is because what we're approving shouldn't have anything to do with service. What we're approving is easements, but I've never had this many calls over something like this. And it's frustrating to me that we're not talking about something that's going to save money for the city, and create jobs, and stuff like that. We're talking about this. It's frustrating. And you don't even have to comment back. I'm just letting you know what I receive in calls, personally, at my house. Not even through anybody's sites or anything else. My cable has improved, but the tiling, when it hits, it hits, and it affects twenty channels.
Mayor, Councilor Schuster, the tiling is absolutely the number-one issue that we're having with that switching equipment, and I'm confident that we're not going to have those problems that we've had over the last three months. As far as your drop situation, your drop, if it used to be underground, should be underground. So, I'll personally look into that issue. And one thing that I think happens when we have issues like this is, one, we have an issue that affected everyone, new houses, old houses, everyone. So, I think we've corrected that. But the other part of this is that, when we've been through similar issues in other municipalities, it's important that people understand that you could have an in-house issue, that a squirrel has chewed your drop, a bad connector, a bad splitter, that we need to come out and fix. Because if we don't come out and fix it, the issue's not going to resolve itself. And I don't want to confuse the issues we've been having with an individual issue, which would look very similar to that. And it's important that people call in, allow us to roll a truck, which we will do, and we'll come out and fix the drop, or the piece of equipment, or the splitter. Because it does often happen, and I think people, to your point, think, "Oh, it's just part of these outages. I'm not going to call them, because they hang up the phone, and my service is going to continue to be inferior, and we can't fix it if you don't call us."
And I will just mention, on my fence, there is a splitter, because it goes to not only my house, but then off the fence, it goes over to the next house.
We'll take a look at that. That's not a waste of money.
Thank you. Councilor Vitale?
Just a quick one, and I think maybe it's contract language, and maybe the city manager might simply be able to answer this. Under the terms in Section two point two, initial term of ten has been crossed out and replaced with five years, so I'm assuming this is a five-year contract. And then it says, this franchise will be automatically extended for an additional term of five years, and goes on and on and on, and said, if, the only way we can not enter into the negotiations, or we do enter into it, is we have to give them at least three years' notice before the expiration. Now, this tells me that if two years before, if no problems occur, then all of a sudden, two years before the expiration, there's all kinds of problems, well, there's no way to exercise a non-renewal. It's automatically going to be renewed, because we didn't give them the three-year notice. I don't know how we're getting boxed into that. I don't have a problem with an automatic five-year extension after five years. But that three years is kind of bothersome.
Why don't we go to city attorney, or the city manager?
Mayor and council, I'll let the acting city attorney jump in, but I wanted to note, Dave has reminded me, the reason there's the strike-through in Section two point two, taking the term from ten years to five, is that the council, on second reading, changed that down to five years, and then, I'm not entirely sure, Councilor Vitale, what your question was related to the three years, but it is clearly stated there, there's a three-year notice.
Well, yes, clearly stated. My question is, if there isn't any problem the first three years of this contract, but in the fourth year, we're having all kinds of problems, it says here, we have to notify them at least three years before the expiration date to renew the franchise. So, if the three years expires, and then all of a sudden, we have all kinds of problems, it automatically gets renewed.
You have to give them the three-year. You would have to comply with that contract language.
Okay. So, after, what you guys got to do is hurry up and get through the first three years, you're shaping the five-year renewal.
Our now is running a ten-year, though. We would have to rewrite that down.
Let's try to go through the, to the mayor on this, because we're going to get sidebar Anything else from either the city manager or acting city attorney?
I don't think so. I think what, you know, as we were just discussing here, because of the amendment from ten to five years, maybe we want to look at the three-year notice. That's something the council could direct, but the way I read that, and I'm going to invite Holly to correct me if she sees it differently, is it's for a term of five years, automatically renewing for another term of five years. That doesn't tie your hands as to when you can issue the three-year notice. You could issue it in year one of the first five-year term, year two, year three, year four. You could even issue it in year five of the first five-year term, because it's going to automatically renew for subsequent five-year term.
That's correct. And then, and then they would have the three-year term after that. So, you can issue it at any time in the first five or the second five, but they get that three-year.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. As I read fourteen dash one, it says that there could be a review, we could ask for a review, if there was, if they failed to comply. Now, failed to comply has, in the body of this easement agreement, hasn't, doesn't deal with the phone calls that we receive on quality of service and quality of the product. So, I don't know how we could ever, you know, obviously, your letter says that you'll get back with the customer, which I am confident that you will. You've been doing that, and that shows that there's an intent to do that. But in order for us to have an annual review, we may have to change this to a one-year agreement. Because you don't want to put in there that you want to have a review on service. You want to have a review on whether you've complied with the easement agreement that we have before us. So, when we get complaints about things outside this easement agreement, there's no reason for us to call you, because it's not within the agreement that's before us. So, I'm not in, I'm not in favor of changing this to one year, but that is something that would automatically require us to have this conversation annually, instead of just once every five years, or once every ten years. So, well, the reason I'm bringing that up is I think it would be such a small thing for us to just say that, you know, should the city desire to meet with you, to talk about quality of service of the customer, then we would have that conversation.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Councilor Shumway, I don't know if you have a copy of my letter, but I, okay. Are we able to provide?
I accept that it's there, and I accept it's in good faith.
Sure. And I think the intent is to meet with the council, and not necessarily call every customer back. That's something I've been doing. But I think if you saw service-related issues, and asked us to come in and talk about those specific issues, the intent of the letter would be to meet with the city staff or city council, and address those issues. And if I could point out, with the term of the franchise agreement, the franchise would give a five-year term. If neither side wanted to cancel, or if it was going to get canceled, we would need notice in advance under the Cable Act, and you would need at least three years to enter into informal negotiations. That's why that window is inside the franchise agreement. And generally, when the franchise is going to expire between thirty-six and thirty months prior to the expiration, we have to notify the city of our intent to renew the franchise. That's why that language is in place.
Thank you.
Just for clarification.
Thank you. Councilor Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add one more piece to this discussion, because we keep kind of going around in circles here about Section fourteen, and we could ask you, you know, use this option if we thought you weren't enforcing the agreement, but there's nothing in the agreement about customer service standards. So, if you go to the FCC's website, the Cable Act says that they have adopted standards aimed at improving the quality of customer service rendered by cable operators. Those are the standards that you guys have to comply with through the FCC. It goes on to say that although the standards were issued by the FCC, local franchising authorities are charged with enforcing them. Franchising authorities must provide cable operators ninety days of their intent to enforce the standards. Franchise authorities may also adopt stricter or additional standards with the consent of the cable operator, or through enactment of state or municipal law. So, the FCC is saying that it is our responsibility to enforce these customer service standards, but you're not willing to engage in a conversation, to put something in the franchise agreement to give us this ability to enforce these customer service standards. I don't like the section, second option here, which is the FCC says, and I would stand to be corrected by the city attorney if Wyoming precludes this, but creating stricter customer service laws by municipal ordinance here in LaRime. That sounds like that might be an option that we have to go through if we can't get to an agreement where we can agree through the franchise agreement to communicate more regularly and better to address these customer service issues. I just wanted to make the point that the FCC says that this is our job, to enforce these customer service standards.
Would you like a reply from our acting city attorney?
Does Wyoming preclude that, city attorney?
I put you on the spot tonight.
I was trying to look it up.
I'll tell you what, if you'd like, why don't we, you can get back to it, that question. I know we've got some members of the public that would like to speak also, and we could always go to them, and then come back to council, and come back to you gentlemen. So, why don't we do that?
Thanks for being here.
So, having said that, I know there's a few members in the audience that would like to speak. I would remind all of you to be somewhat civil, actually, a little more than somewhat civil. And also, hold your comments to within five minutes. And I'll take the gentleman with his hand up in blue first.
And just identify.
And you need to please identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Stratton, and on this, I ask the honorable mayor and council, please, if we need to do law on making customer service a priority, do it. Otherwise, please, just don't act on renewing contract with them. I have been dealing with the cable situation for close to six months now. They state that they will come and help you and do that. We've had a technician. I would say, almost once a week, I'm consistently calling in. They're consistently stating that, oh, you know, the signal to your house is working great, your cable's working great, we've checked everything on the inside. It's definitely our problem, but there's nothing that we, as a technician, can do to fix this problem. And when you ask, "Well, how do you get ahold of somebody?", there's no way to get ahold of them. The consistent calling back, that type of thing, that, I haven't seen it, and I would love to see from any one of them. You go into their office and ask them, and they're like, "Oh, we're working on that. It will be fixed." It will be, they can't tell you a date, they can't tell you a time period. Whenever I was watching TV, right before hearing that this meeting was going to happen, and definitely needing to come down here and talk, it was doing the same thing on our system, yet they're stating today that it should have been fixed by Sunday. We don't have a service that we should have, and maybe the city can look into other providers to provide a service that would work out for both the businesses and the people. I don't think I have anything else I can really say, and keep it in a civil manner, and be very nice, because if you're running the ads on the television that states how great your service is, and how everything should be, you should live up to that standard. You should be that standard, and not go, "Oh, well, we can't really do anything about it, but, you know, keep paying the bill." Thank you very much.
And thank you.
If you'd like to come to our house and actually fix that problem, I would love that.
Who else would like to speak from the public? Yes, Mr. Glass.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm Brett Glass. Just wanted to make a few comments that I thought were relevant, after looking over the agreement that was published on the website. First thing I wanted to request is that you make sure, read this over very carefully, and make sure everything, and it makes sense. If you take a look at paragraph six point one of this agreement, it just doesn't grammatically make sense. This is one of the ones that I commented on before, with respect to the cable company insisting on having carte blanche access to a property before they would serve it at all, and sending you an agreement, basically signing away any right to control their access. This not only doesn't remedy that, but it's just grammatically incorrect, if you look at the last sentence. So, please have the, before you approve this, have your legal staff fix that. Second of all, just to serve the public interest, I'd like to request that you not make, not accept any side agreements. That's not an appropriate way to do business. It's not the way that I do business, and any of the businesses that I operate. It's certainly not the way that you should do business on behalf of the public. We do need some assurances of customer service, and I don't understand, in fact, Charter's hesitation to commit to talking to the city and the city council. It bothers me very much to hear that they would hesitate to agree to something that's simple. I don't understand why that would be. Finally, the clause that says you can't do anything for three years is absurd. The cable is now, you know, now we have a convergence where cable runs it on internet time, and three years is way too long for any provision having to do with dealing with issues with it. I definitely, I agree with Councilman Vitale that that should be struck. Anyway, that's all I have to say. If staff would like to get in touch with me to talk about the specific issues here, I'd be glad to talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the gentleman in the back row was interested in speaking.
Councilperson's of Mr. Mayor, Bruce Patreous of LaRime, and basically, my first two gentlemen pretty much covered it, as did Mr. Schuster on our complaints. I went in without beating a dead horse, and doing over and over and over things again. I went in about three weeks ago, after that bad weekend of reception that you had mentioned, and wanted to know. I asked them, I said, "Why am I getting a cable bill?" And they looked at me like, "What?" I says, "Well, our cable sucks." I says, "We don't get any service, but yet we get a bill, and expect to pay it in full every month." I said, "What's wrong with the picture?" Again, as these gentlemen have said, and you keep hearing from them in the company, "Well, we have problems. We're working on it. We're going to get it fixed." Like I said, about three weeks ago, I went in, I can't see very little, if any difference. Today, it's just about every day, if not every day and every night, tiling, volume going out and tiling, tiling and volume, frozen picture, no picture at all, a blue screen. We're getting sick of it. What would the cable company do if the people of LaRime would just quit paying their bill altogether? They would cancel our service. So, what? We aren't getting much service anyway. Go to Dish, or Satellite, some other way or something. I mean, every time it rains, the wind blows, it snows, it's cloudy, it's sunny, a tree falls over, the cable goes out. We're fed up with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience, as members of the public, wish to speak? Okay. Would counsel's preference be to take a break right now, or would you like to work our way through this issue and then take a break?
Take a break right now.
Why don't we take a break right now for about five minutes or so?
Levels of service. Having been in business and, you know, in the food business, you don't have a very high level of business, and had I run my business with the amount of complaints and lack of response to them, you know, I wouldn't have been in business ten days. So I think they need to come to the table and give us what they're going to do to improve some of these concerns that we have. And, and, and to, and I don't plan on voting for this as it is anyway, but I think you're right on that issue.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, you're the surest that we'll continue to get the five percent. Okay. I'm not too sure that I want to start over and go through three readings and then start postponing again, because until we get a resolution to the, you know, the service concerns that the public has, I don't know that we're going to ever reach a point where there's satisfaction. I would, I would still prefer to postpone this to April fifth, give them a chance to come back with an agreement that they would have an annual review, and then pass the five, ten-year agreement. That's my preference. And so, and I want this discussion to go on, but my preference wouldn't be to start over at square one. I'd prefer to, you know, give a chance for us to look into the FCC opportunity we have to do things there, and then also to have them come back with an agreement to include what they're, you know, stating, that they want to have good service and that they want to have a review when it's for the, you know, coming from the city, which I think that we could write that very easily, that they're not having to respond to every complaint as they've been doing. I see this as something where there is an easy solution, because if they, you know, if they've already mentioned tonight that they have equipment now that will improve the service greatly, we'll notice that right away. And then I think it'll be very easy for us to move on to completing this franchise agreement. But I also want to make sure that we have a chance to talk to them about service, not just about violations within the body of the franchise agreement.
Thank you. I think at this time it's probably appropriate to ask Mr. Rasmussen if he'd like to comment, or either one of the other two gentlemen.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, again, our preference would be a five-year renewal with automatic, five-year renewal. I think, you know, I've mentioned that we wouldn't want the annual review inside the franchise agreement. So like Assistant City Manager Daragon said, we're kind of at an impasse. You know, the options are approve a franchise agreement with however the council wants to word it, and we would sign it. Maybe we wouldn't, wouldn't sign it. That's an option. The other is to postpone and come back at a later time. I think as Counselor Shumway mentioned, you know, if that equipment has made the fix, we'll see that. If there's other outstanding items, you know, we have teams looking at this. I think this perfect storm occurred. We had some severe outages the time of a franchise renewal. I think that caught everybody's attention. And prior to coming in, we had a franchise agreement that was almost our template agreement, and we would, we would adhere to that, and then it's changed. I think some people have mentioned along the way, this is a monopoly. It's not. This is a non-exclusive franchise agreement. We're making commitments that we want the service improved inside the city. We believe it has been improved with some of these new equipments being installed, and I think there's, you know, positive ways to go forward. If you bumped us back, we could revisit it and continue negotiating language. Our preference would not to be, you know, I guess if you voted it down, we wouldn't want to renegotiate the entire agreement from the beginning. I think that costs everybody more time and money. But I, I think, you know, if it was pushed back a month, two months, even three months, it continues to operate as a month-to-month agreement. Franchise fees are still paid, and maybe that, that language, that could be acceptable to both sides, could be drafted.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Then I would make a motion to postpone this item to the first meeting. This is, wait a minute. I'm trying to figure it out.
Mayor, June?
May, June, the first meeting in June.
There you go. All right, there's, there's a motion to postpone. I need a second on that motion.
Let's get a date, and then I'll second it.
First meeting in June.
I know. What day is that?
Hold on.
I'd have to look at my.
June seven.
June seventh.
I was running through, but I will just back.
All right, there's a motion to postpone. There's a second by Counselor Shumway. Discussion on the motion to postpone by council. Counselor Henry?
I just, you know, we just keep postponing and postponing, and we change things, and they don't like it, and we postpone, and we postpone. And I'm going to vote no on the postponement, and I am going to vote no on the main motion as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion by council? Vice Mayor?
I will echo Counselor Henry's response. I will also vote no on the postponement and no on the agreement. I think in my short time sitting here and just doing a little Google searching, we were able to find sample ordinances coast to coast. We were able to find the top ten strategic list of things that should be included in a franchise agreement out of a law firm out of Minnesota. We have ample, ample sources to, to, to come back and, you know, go at this again. So we've got people, you know, I don't know if they're hearing us, but we're, we've got people really, really, really upset, you know, not just a little upset, a lot upset. And, and I think you need to know that. And we are, we are in a tough position here, obviously, because, because we want to, you know, we listen and we want their service to get better, right? And, and maybe the switch that you're talking about will do it, but we don't know that today, right? I mean, we don't. So, so like I said.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schuster?
I will vote for the postponement, because I think to try to start over is going to be a nightmare. And so I will vote for the postponement. If the postponement fails, I'm not sure what I'll do.
I'll have to think about that for a minute.
I'm hoping things get better. I did not think this was going to be the biggest topic tonight. I'm absolutely just shocked that it is. And everybody's going to have a ward meeting in two weeks, and I would like to see if anything shows up at the ward meeting on this, or if there will be a bigger topic yet. So I've always had good attendance at the ward meeting, so I'm pretty curious on what's going to show up there.
Okay, I've got Counselor Shumway that would like to speak, I believe for a second time on the postponement. Is there anyone else on council prior to Council, Council Hanson?
I wanted to speak on the postponement. My wish to postpone was simply governed by the idea that we wouldn't have to start from scratch, because I have the strong feeling that this thing would fail tonight. And then we are at the motion of, at a point where we would have to start from scratch. I think there's something to be said that we can iron this out, maybe in three months, and then have some kind of an agreement, because I'm also afraid that the, the other chance is that the company may simply say, I don't like the monthly agreement anymore. You're done in a month. It wouldn't bother me, because I use satellite, and I was going to point out, there is at least a competition for the cable with the satellite. And so I think the best way of saving time and effort on our part would be for the postponement to maybe come to some kind of an agreement and finally get this off our docket. I know, I agree with Counselor Henry. This has been bothering us much too long.
Counselor, if.
On the postponement, it's just a quick question for charter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To decide whether or not I'm going to move, vote for the postponement or not, I need to know that if we postpone this till May, the charter is willing to come back with another offer that's not just a letter that's written. The charter is willing to discuss putting something in the franchise agreement. Otherwise, it will not support the postponement.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Somerville. Obviously, I'll take all the comments tonight and take those back to our government relations team and take a look at that. But I mean, I can't make a guarantee that it won't be a letter, but I mean, we'll give it a very fair and productive look. I mean, we'll, obviously, we'll continue talking with the city and see what other avenues we can look at.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway, if you could be brief, please?
I will. I think in June, on June seventh, we'll know if the service is improved, and we'll also know if they have agreed to an annual review.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the postponement? Okay, on the postponement, not on the service. Please come forward. As to your preference.
I believe that Chris Stratton, again for docket, I believe that we definitely don't get an answer on their behalf on it being able to be changed, et cetera. I think it would be a better idea to start from the ground up. That way you can look at other providers. There are a lot of them out there. And if they're able to bring something to the table to start again, it would be good. But I believe that this has went on long enough with them, and it seems like you guys are definitely getting the backpocket aspect of we can't say yes or no. You should just go ahead and close it out. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Mr. Deragon, did you have something to say? I think we're ready to go to roll call. City Clerk, would you do roll call, please? This is on the postponement, not on the main motion.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
No.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Somerville.
No.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Polikas.
No.
No.
That is four yeses and five nos, Your Honor.
So the postponement motion fails. We're back to the main motion. I think we've discussed it inside and out, so I'm going to ask for a roll call on the main motion.
Somerville.
No.
Schuster.
No.
Shumway.
No.
Henry.
No.
Hanson.
No.
Vitale.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Polikas.
No.
That is zero yeses and nine nos, Your Honor.
So the, the item fails on third reading. All right. We got through it.
That's the first time I've had a unanimous vote.
That's because I addressed you as Assistant City Attorney. Onto our next item, which is item number 18. Vice Mayor.
I, I moved to direct staff to advertise public notice as required by Wyoming statutes, section 15-1-112, on March 19, '26, and April 2, 2016, for the possible sale of municipal property, more specifically 722.6 acres on the Monolith Ranch, and set a public hearing on April 5, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second by Counselor Somerville. Assistant City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Council, from Mountain Cement, we've received a possible purchase offer for land that we would possibly sell. So.
I got you. I got you.
I'd have to be nice now. Going back to 2012, the city entered into an agreement with Mountain Cement to explore possibilities on the ranch where mining may be possible for the purposes of how they conduct their business. When the city purchased the ranch, a number of years ago, or in the early 80s, Mountain Cement retained the mineral rights to everything, or to most everything that's on the ranch, and they do have the right to mine that. What, what this would do is just simply start the process of the public notice and setting the public hearing for April 5. During that time period, staff will be compiling more information for you. We will have the ranch committee have a consideration of this topic and a recommendation to you. We certainly can set a work session where we can just discuss this in depth. I think it's important that we initially do the public notice as required by statute 151112, and this certainly, in my opinion, meets the requirements under economic development for either growth or retention of jobs as allowed by that statute, to do this sale without a public bid process, but with a public hearing that can make those considerations that are brought forward. I think it's important that we have that public hearing and gain the public's input prior to council's discussion of this topic. I think it's important that the public weighs in first. Subsequent to that, the council certainly will have questions, and we will provide all of the information and answers that council desires, and then probably a couple weeks after that public hearing, we would bring it back to council, or later if we've not been able to schedule a work session appropriately. I believe Mr. Edwards is here from Nicholas Intangemen, representing Mountain Cement, and it probably would be advantageous that he has time to speak, because he endured the cable TV discussion.
Questions for, questions for Assistant City Manager from council? Yes, Counselor Henry.
So I don't totally understand the language in the letter. It says that the shale is owned by the United States.
There's a BLM piece of property within the ranch. There's, it's federally owned, or the.
Can you tell me which section?
I guess I might be able to explain that better than I can. Or Darren, he's still here, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Mitch Edwards with Nicholas Intangemen on behalf of Mountain Cement. To answer directly Ms. Henry's question, the letter there talks about the, there's federal minerals underneath of the surface owned by the city as well. So part of it is privately owned, and then there's all of Section 2, the minerals are owned by the federal government. And if you recall back in 2012 when we did our exploration, when we entered into the agreement, we were exploring the federal minerals in Section 2 to get quantity and quality analysis of those, those minerals in Section 2. And that's why we entered into the agreement with the city with respect to that core drilling that we did in Section 2. So when it talks about the minerals being owned by the federal government, we're talking about the minerals in Section 2. What happened initially when the land was originally patented from the government to the homesteader, the, the federal government at that time reserved all of the mineral rights, so they own the mineral rights under Section 2.
Okay. But Section 2 is not the section that you are wanting to purchase.
That's, that's one of the, the sections. That's the primary bulk of the property that we want to purchase from the city. So the city owns the surface rights, it does not own any of the mineral rights, it owns the surface rights in Section 2, and we're looking to buy Section 2, and then another triangle in Section 11 and Section 1. Essentially, what, what we were doing is looking at, at buying what the city has north of Sand Creek, so that there's not little fingers, if you will, of property that the city owns and cutting off access to those. So we were just buying it all in one, looking to buy it all in one chunk. I have, I have for you, I created some maps that might, might help you a little bit in, in considering this, and so I'll, I'll pass those out. I made additional copies for staff as well that'll kind of give you a better idea of where, the property that we're talking about. There's, there's two pages. The first page is, what I tried to do is give you a, a, I don't know what level this is, but let's say a 10,000-foot level, so you could see in relationship to the city limits, which are in yellow, where Mountain Cement's cement plant is, and then the property that Mountain Cement is wanting to purchase from the city is in, outlined in the blue south. It's approximately four to five miles south of Mountain Cement. When you turn to the second page, what I did is I zoomed in on the property that Mountain Cement is looking to purchase. And so the bulk of it right there, you'll see the number 2, where the Mountain Cement's haul road goes through there. That's the section where I was talking about, where the federal government owns the minerals. And then there's the little corner in 11 and the little corner in Section 1. Off to the west of the property that we're looking to purchase is Mountain Cement's existing shale quarry, where we're currently mining shale. And just to give you a little background, shale is one of the raw materials that goes into the Portland cement manufacturing process to create and manufacture cement. The shale is actually, what's in the shale that's actually used is silica and alumina, and then a little bit of iron oxide that goes into the process. But that's, that's through shale, and shale is essentially a clay. So it's chemical components that are contained within the shale itself that are used in the manufacturing of the, of the Portland cement. As you all know, Mountain Cement employs about 120 people in town, and we're one of the largest taxpayers and private, private employers in, in the, in the community. And this essentially is, what we're looking to is the future to expand our reserves with respect to longevity of the plant. As you all know, we've expanded the longevity of the limestone. When we purchased the limestone and the property, that the limestone sits underneath or within from more livestock, south of the interstate, and we tied that up for 50, well, that's almost 100-plus years worth of limestone. What we're looking at here is tying up 50 to 100 years' worth of additional shale that's primarily owned by the federal government. So what we're looking to do is make life simple for both Mountain Cement and the city by purchasing that property at its, at its market value now. As you all know, in 1981, our predecessor sold this to the city, and now we're looking to buy it back for many times what they sold it to the city for. But I, I know one of the questions that came up was with respect to water rights and those kinds of things, water rights on this. There are no appropriate surface water rights here for this property. It's dry grazing land, and there are, I believe, two, but it might just be one well on the property, but those wells are for stock use and very shallow wells into the, the shale formation. And I believe, last time I checked, one of them probably wasn't even very good quality of water, but not, it's not water that would be used in a municipal system, so. But as, what we're, what we're looking at here today is just simply moving this forward into the public process, so that we've got all of our ducks lined up, and we're getting public comment, and, and you guys have a ability to ask us questions. And one of the things that I would ask of you all that would help me and help, help Mountain Cement, is if you have questions, if you can get those to Mr. Deragon or city staff, they can provide those to us so that we're prepared to answer those questions at the public hearing and kind of address that there. And same with the advisory committee. We'd love to and be happy to meet with the Monolith Ranch Advisory Committee and, and answer any questions that they have about this. But that's kind of a, a broad overview of what we're looking to do, and, and I know there's probably questions out there about leasing and various different things, but my, my experience in leasing is that when you're looking at a long-term lease for something like this, it's, it's essentially purchasing the property without purchasing the property. And at the end of the day, the lease pays out a whole lot less than the buying the property, particularly when you look at the time value of money, so.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a question for Mr. Edwards as a lawyer or our attorney. Something is unclear to me. It happened that I read my, my house agreement, you know, here in the city, and there is the same kind of statement about that I do not own anything under my property. If there are any mineral rights or anything, the federal government or whatever owns those. I think it's the, not the state government, the federal government? I can't remember what it says. But it says, I own whatever, up to five feet or whatever property going down, if I remember right, in my agreement. And my question is very simple, simple here. If you, let's say, we were to sell this, rent this, or whatever to you, you still have to apply to the federal government to mine this property, don't you?
The, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hanson, so with respect to what you're talking about with your house is, the, essentially, that's a notification that you don't own the minerals underneath, and that the mineral rights are the dominant estate. And the, the law generally is, is that the mineral estate has, because it's dominant, the person who's going to extract the minerals, explore for the minerals, so forth, has the right to use so much of the surface as is reasonably necessary for the extraction of those minerals, meaning that, you know, they can, they could come out there and, and start mining those minerals. Now, in the situation in your house, there's various different things that, that play into that, but that, that wouldn't necessarily be the case. But in this case, the, the mineral rights are dominant, would have the ability to come in and mine on this property regardless of any payments to, to the surface owner. But there's a different process to do that, and that's through bonding with the federal government, with reclamation, which we have to do anyway with respect to our permits. But mineral rights and mineral ownership is not always with the, the state or with the federal government. There's private mineral rights, too, and, and that's a whole nother search. Essentially, in Wyoming, there's split estates, the surface estate and the mineral estate, and mineral estate is a dominant estate, so.
Pardon me for following this up. So it, we, the city owns the surface. Now, you, if, if you got the property, sold or whatever, you can simply start mining it, or do you still need a permit to do that from somebody else, namely the state or the federal government?
So the process with respect to this is, is the shale where the federal government owns the shale, the shale is not what they call a locatable mineral, it's a sellable mineral. So we have to go through a process, one, to purchase the, the shale from the federal government, and then the, once we follow up with that, is going through the permit process with the DEQ and the BLM in conjunction, where they, we go out and we do the studies for vegetation and hydrology and archaeology and various different things, submit that to the BLM and to the DEQ, and they do a simultaneous review of our permit and give us a permit to mine that property. So it's kind of a multi-stage process. This is step one in the process, and what we're essentially trying to do by purchasing it is make all of our lives simpler. So instead of going through the process of bonding onto the property, we're just saying, hey, if we buy it, we can control the property, then it makes all of our lives easier, because controlling the property is important with respect to the mining operations, so that you're keeping people off of the property, you're not worrying about competing uses and so forth with respect to various other safety laws and other things, so.
Thank you. That clarifies it for me. Thank you, man.
Thank you. Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have some questions also for Mitch, but I wanted to just be brief, because I think right now, we're just kind of seeing whether we want to enter into this, you know, explore this. First of all, looking at this map, there's access roads onto the Monolith Ranch. Some of them touch the surface of this area that's, you're talking about. So I want to know, you know, about access. And also, I'm not clear yet whether or not this, the Monolith Ranch road, which, haul road which you have, is, and it goes to the Monolith Ranch shale quarry. Do you have an active quarry there that's outside of this area that you're purchasing, or is that the, because what you're showing is the.
Mountain Cement.
Yeah, Mountain Cement. What'd they say?
They said Monolith Ranch.
We're the Monolith Ranch, you're Mountain Cement. It used to be Mount, Monolith. But is the, the Mountain Cement quarry active, and are you planning on having the new quarry within the area that's being purchased?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Shumway, the, to kind of break down your question, you're looking at the second page, the quarry that we show is Mountain Cement Shale Quarry, that's a current active quarry that we have. There's, as you can see, there's kind of two separate areas that's being mined. There's actually two types of, of shale, brown shale and black shale. And, and we, those have different components in them with respect to different levels of silica, alumina, and so forth. So we mine different areas to mix at different times for whatever the process might be. Now, with respect to the property that we want to purchase, that would be a future expansion of that, that quarry. So as we mine out of the property that you see to the west there, the active quarry, we'd start to reclaim back behind us as we mine through that, and then mine into the property that we'd be purchasing, assuming, of course, that everything works out with purchasing the shale from the BLM and getting our mining permits and so forth. The haul road that you see going through there, I'm not even going to gander to guess, but sometime in the early 2000s, Mountain Cement and the city entered into an agreement where Mountain Cement has an easement to cross Monolith Ranch there in Section 2 for access to its quarries. The property that you see in blue is all of the city property in that vicinity. There's some city property to the north. Everything to the west of what you see in blue is owned by the Bath Ranch. So the other roads that you see going through there are, well, the one to the south is an alternative access for Mountain Cement's quarries, particularly if we were to mine in Section, I believe it's 19 there to the south, and then for Bath access. So I don't believe any of these roads actually provide access to the Monolith Ranch, except for the extent that Monolith Ranch uses the Mountain Cement's haul road within Section 2 for whatever they do in Section 2.
Okay. Another question I have is, you know, this is going to be surface mining. Number one, you're probably not doing blasting at the current quarry. Would there be blasting at the new quarry? And also, reclamation, right now, out of these 700, let's see, 722 acres, reclamation, do you do reclamation? I mean, surface mining can open up a huge area, but reclamation is when you're finished with mining a certain area, then you bring it back to its natural vegetation. What, what it, is that, that would be something I'd like to hear, you know, as soon as you gather some of that information. And the other thing I had a question about was. Then, the other thing I had a question about was, um... Does, has there been any conversation with the ranching operation to see if there's any concerns that they have? And the second piece of that, with the Go-Forth Reservoir projects that we have in mind, is, would this in, in any way affect, uh, the Go-Go-Forth Reservoir plans?
Why don't we, why don't we get an answer from, uh, Darren on that?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor, just, just to answer that first, uh, question about the mining areas, when we have the public hearing, what we can do for you is bring in a map that shows kind of our, our proposed mining areas. So what Mountain Cement does is they wouldn't be mining all seven hundred and twenty-two acres. There's certain areas that have, uh, pockets, if you will, of the, the mineral, and so there's, while the area would be in our permit area, there's, within that permit area, there's only certain areas that are what they call affected areas that we can mine. And so, um, that's what we'd be looking at, is just, um, mining in those particular areas and disturbing those particular areas that were within the broader permit area. Um, and actually, um, so, um, we wouldn't have, and we wouldn't have the ability to open seven hundred and some acres worth of property, nor would we want to, because frankly, there's not shale over that entire area, or some of it might be just used for roads and things like that, so. Yeah, and with respect to the other, um, question that you had regarding ranching concerns, um, I think that the city's better to answer those, although I can tell you that, uh, Mountain Cement has been in this process with the city for quite some time, going back to our exploration. But with respect to the purchase, I believe, I personally haven't contacted, uh, Darren, but I know that folks at Mountain Cement have, and, uh, talked to him about that. And as part of this process, um, back in at least March of twenty fifteen, uh, Mountain Cement was talking with them about getting title commitment work, which we did, and, and got paid for initially, and then we got, uh, appraisals, um, and did those types of things. So we've been in communication with the city and the folks, um, that are operating the ranch, um, throughout this entire process of bringing it here to you today. Um, so it's not something that's just happened overnight, um, it started way back in, probably twenty fourteen initially, um, and then has been taking steps to get to where we are today, so.
Thank you. Uh, let, let me get a answer, and we can go back and forth as far as, uh, we asked the questions.
What's a question for Mr. Edwards? Who own, who owns the land that the current quarry is on? Is that the Bath Ranch, or does Mountain Cement own that? It was just a very quick question.
Yeah, so Bath, Bath Ranch owns that property, and we have a long-term, um, agreement with them. Uh, the difference there is they also had some, uh, interest in the mineral rights, and so, um, that was a little bit different cir- circumstance than what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parkin.
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Shumway, uh, as far as the Go-Forth Reservoir project, um, this would not affect it at all. There's no water rights in this part of the ranch, other than a collapsed stockwell and another stockwell that has, uh, sulfates in it that are so high that it's unusable. Um, the Go-Forth Reservoir is actually two drainages over Five Mile Creek to Harney Creek, um, a different part of the ranch altogether, so it's completely separate from that. Um, as far as contact with the lessees, uh, Stanley Bear, uh, it's been limited to this point, but he is aware of it. Uh, when we did the ranch lease renewal process through Ranch Advisory Committee and through him, uh, we knew that this was coming back then, and so it's actually written into the lease that we have currently, that this was coming, and that he should be aware of it. And so we kind of had a framework in the lease how we would address it, and essentially we'll have to downgrade his lease payment when we figure out the amount of grazing days we were going to lose. You know, this particular property, I'm not sure, it's probably going to have a carrying capacity of two hundred animal units or somewhere in there, so he's going to lose that grazing opportunity, so, you know, he'll pay us a little less money for that. But it's definitely something that he was aware of. Uh, the conversations I've had with Tom Hamm at Mountain Cement, we haven't went into any detail, but it sounds like he is, they're agreeable to picking up the lease, at least in the short term, and allowing, uh, Bear Livestock to continue to graze it in some capacity, um, at least for a while. But, again, uh, we don't have any details on that at this time, those talks will be ongoing.
Please, Councilor Shumway.
Feeding Laramie Valley was outside this area, right?
Yes, Councilor Shumway, uh, Feeding Laramie Valley is in the Hunzucker Park portion of the ranch, and, uh, even further away from this than Go-Forth.
Why, any other questions? For, uh, Mr. Parkin?
Yeah.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, Darren, I don't know if you had a chance to, to see this map, that there's a, a interesting orange, or orange, green, um, circle? Is that a pivot? I'm thinking Irish, orange and green.
Yes.
That's the pivot?
Yes, Councilor Pierce, that's our, uh, alfalfa pivot right there.
That's our nice-
And, and what is about the, the mile difference between the pivot and?
One exact mile.
Is that, is that a mile, because squares are miles?
Yes, those are section lines.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions for, uh, either Mr. Edwards or city staff? All right. Councilor Hanson.
One more question. Would the negotiations that you do with them, uh, include several options, purchase, lease, how long, et cetera, you, you would entertain all those? Because, uh, you know, I briefly talked to Mr. Edwards before and said that, you know, I'd be interested, even if it's a long lease of a hundred years or something like that, that we do not start parceling out the Monolith Ranch in any way, shape, or form. And so, as long as there are different options included, that I would be interested in. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Councilor Hanson, I think all of those options would be on the table for a discussion, you know, whether or not Mountain Cement is willing to entertain them, it's certainly a negotiation that goes back and forth.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anything else? Any comments from council? City Clerk, would you do roll call, please?
Somerville.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Shuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
There's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number nineteen, consideration of future council work session topics. Anyone? Council, Vice Mayor?
So I think we need to put, uh, this Monolith Ranch issue for a work session, I think we have a lot of questions, so I think we should do that. And I would, you know, maybe, uh, we should go out and, not that we need to walk the seven hundred and twenty-two acres, but I think we need to get a feel for, for where it is, especially, um, you know, I think we just need to get out there, so I would be really interested if we could arrange, um, kind of a trip out there to take a look, take a look at five hundred and thirty-three dollars an acre, what it really gets you, so.
I would almost suggest, um, I, I agree with that, and we do have a water specialist that knows the ranch really well. As long as we keep it four or under, I would suggest, uh, we create some times and, uh, utilize our staff independently, if you will, rather than trying to set a time and do a bus and all of that. Okay? And I agree with, by the way, and I'm, I'm sure there's more than one person agreeing on that work session, including the mayor.
Anything else for work sessions? Yes.
Um, I'll just put this out here and kind of gauge support from the council. Do we want to put on the work session list, looking at customer service ordinances for cable franchise providers, or, or do we want to wait and see how discussions go?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer that to our Assistant City Manager and see what he has to say. As to an approach.
I would, I would suggest we wait and see what they bring back to us.
Okay.
I think-
I'm okay with that.
I think we've made a point this evening.
A unanimous point.
Okay, anything else?
A surprising unanimous point.
All right, I'll go on to the next item, which is item number twenty, public comments on non-agenda items by sign-in request. I don't believe there is any.
No, we're done.
Um, so I'll go on to item number twenty-one, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was never assigned to be stopped earlier, but I will do it anyway. Adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, I move that we do so.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilor Henry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned to executive session.